Okay.
Right.
It is six thirty-three P M. So let's get into this meeting because it is a beast of a agenda before us. So for the record, this is a regular meeting of the City Council and W P C A. Today is Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have a full board all attending in person in the City Hall Auditorium. So if we could, before we get into the agenda, stand and pledge the flag. All right, the first on the agenda this evening is a roll call vote on the Code of Ordinance, Chapter Twenty-two Ethics. So I'm looking for a motion, thank you, by the Board of Councilmen to adapt the proposed revisions as per the public hearing. Thank you, Councilman Rouwett, and it was seconded by Councilman Oliver. And are there questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
I don't know if anybody has questions, but the what was provided to you for tonight's meeting, the clean copy is took into consideration all the comments that came out from the public hearing and also from the council here. The one thing I'll point out, if you go to page five of seven, this section twenty-two dash eighteen, you'll see that there's two paragraph Gs. So obviously that we should just change that so that it the second G becomes H and the H becomes I. And that might be something, I think I've discussed stuff like that with Heather before, and you said that might be the kind of thing that when they whoever reviews it and does the final copy, they catch stuff like that. So I don't really know if it makes a difference, but just to point out to you that that should be a change. That's all.
Questions?
I'll move it with that amendment.
Okay, so the motion to reflect the amendments presented by Corporation Council, Councilman Oliver, you'll amend your second?
Yep.
Okay, so motion is made and seconded. If there are no other questions, I'm going to call the vote. Again, it is a roll call. So starting from my right, Councilman Waldron.
Yes.
Councilman Iveyne.
Yes.
Councilwoman Spino.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rouwett.
Yes.
Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Yes.
And Councilman Oliver.
Yes.
Okay. Carries any questions? All right, item two, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Sum up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And before I call that motion, just a reminder for anyone that wishing to address the board that it is a limit of three minutes to speak. So I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the board at this? Mr. Rosa.
Yes, good evening. My name is Alan Rosa. I've appeared once here before. This is in relation to a legal matter that has been again initiated by the City of Torrington. Last year, I was sued when I was thirteen hundred miles away in Florida, when one was known by leadership that would not be able present to contest the action. When I came back, found that my house was being foreclosed. It cost me nearly a hundred thousand dollars in fines to rescue my home. This matter could have been solved simply with it with character and a simple matter of communication. Yet I was knowingly just, just not allowed. You know I wasn't going to be here. You know, it takes twenty, thirty years to earn a house, and it takes a lot of work. And you put your life in danger, you know, you're out there shoveling snow in winter and ice, et cetera, et cetera. I find this action that happened last year just incredibly offensive. It started again this year. I received another notice. And it's, it wasn't when I'm still here, but I can't stay here. I have a medical condition known as neuropathy. It becomes extremely painful in the cold. It's extremely painful now. When you say you cannot walk around for maybe twenty minutes, it just takes in, it's just a lot of pain. I cannot tell you how offended I am by the action taken by the leadership in this community. I've been in the process, I've been discriminated against. I've been lied to by people in government. I've been manipulated. I cannot tell you how, how upset I am and how offensive I find that. If I'm forced to stay here to deal with this legal matter, I will, it will be, and when it gets cold, that the condition becomes incredibly painful. There are days you cannot stand on your feet and walk. If I stay here, I feel my life will be in danger. I want to inform every member of the council of that fact. This should not happen last year. I, once again, I am highly offended by what happened. And I hope that this matter could be resolved. I cannot stay here to defend this action. It was done deliberately, could have been done before. Ken, I don't want to lose, you, you simply cannot confiscate a person's home.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa. We do have an appointment tomorrow.
Appointment tomorrow or Wednesday?
Wednesday, I'm sorry. So we will meet with you Wednesday. Thank you, Mr. Rosa. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, let's jump into this agenda. Item three, I will entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Sum up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an section eight dash two-four review the conveyance of property on Plain Street to O N G Industries, Inc. If this is map block lot one eighteen zero two zero zero one four, as further explained in the Corporation Council's memo dated November sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouwett, and I heard seconded from Councilman Kevin Arrow. All right, questions or comments on this motion?
When I read the letter, it felt like it was two acres, but it's only a very small, like point two of an acre, so it really is small, small.
It's point zero five of an acre.
Oh, okay.
Five hundredths of an acre, it's a teensy little.
Yeah. And what's the reference to the flood control project?
So the two acres, if you look at the assessor's map, and I, I think I attached that, you'll see that there's an outlined area that runs from Wall Street all the way to Brook Street. And I thought it went all the way to Brookside Avenue. Is it? Brookside Avenue used to be Brook Street? In any event, that's all along the river. And so there were properties there that many years ago were taken, I think by eminent domain to provide, you know, for a flood, floodplain protection stuff. So this piece, this five hundredths of an acre, is part of that.
Okay, so it's not really a concern in any respect for the river flooding?
No.
That's something we need to manage?
No. And if you look at the assessor's map, so if you look at the assessor's map and you look at where Plain Street is, which is kind of a little off center to the right, you see Plain Street and the area, that grayed area with the dashed lines, that's that parcel, the assessor considers to be one parcel, and that's that floodplain area. And right at the end of Plain Street, you can see this little blip going up a little to the north. And that's the parcel we're talking about. So the floodplain really won't be affected at all. It'll actually just kind of straighten out the line of it, really.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this request? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, this is land exchange between the City of Torrington and B and R Corporation. So I'm looking for a motion to refer this land exchange between the city and B and R Corporation to the Planning and Zoning Commission for an eight dash two-four review, as further explained in City Engineers' memo dated November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Sum up.
Thank you, I heard Councilwoman Spino, and I heard a second from Councilman Kevin Arrow. Floor is open for questions. No questions? I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion acting herein as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from Fund Number Four-Ninety, sanitary sewer capital improvement. This will be to tie and bond two thousand one hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-two cents for Cinnamon Ridge, P S abandonment evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
So I heard Councilman Waldron and Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments?
I do.
Yes, please.
What is Cinnamon Ridge?
Hi. Cinnamon Ridge is one of our pumping stations up on Sage, Sage Way. The, the pumping station is in need of upgrade. There's a possibility it may be a limited, we're investigating that possibility before we go ahead and plan an upgrade on that station.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'll call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the W P C A administrator to approve payment application number four for the Brightwood Avenue Sewer Replacement Project to Yield Industries in the amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred dollars and forty-six cents. Again, this is coming out of Fund Four-Ninety.
Sum up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Public Works Director and authorize a payment of seventeen thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars to Still River Gardens for landscape improvements at the new skate park at Elise Best Park. Funding for this project comes from the Parks Capital Reserve account zero one zero seven.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouwett, seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments?
I'll make one just brief comment.
Yes.
About the skate park. I've never seen it so active and alive, and it's wonderful to see families and people of all ages utilizing the park, and people told us if we build it, they would come, and they came. So kudos to everyone involved in the planning project.
I agree.
That's all I got.
That's.
And this landscaping step, is it the perimeter along the road or between the pond? Can you kind of explain?
So Ray can share, yeah, the reflecting on what the Board of Education and the Building Committee were worried about. We knew that landscaping was an important piece of this. So Ray, if you want to talk about what that landscaping looks like?
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't have the landscaping plan, but the overview is that the landscaping is on all sides of the park. So on the west side that faces the future basketball court, there are arborvitaries. On the north side that faces the pond, we have three planter areas with ornamental grasses. On the east side, in the corner, we have a dogwood tree, and then we have five hydrangea trees. And then on the curb pieces, we have knockout roses. And then on the street side is just landscaping with some grasses. That's kind of the extent of that.
Okay, good. I was just curious about the placement. Thank you, Ray.
Yeah.
I think the only thing that I would add is Still River Gardens does so much work for the City of Torrington, Cole Park, Franklin Plaza, our pots on Main Street. You know, and what we've learned working with them is right plant, right place. And I think that if you get a chance to get to the park and look at what they've planted, I think that you would agree.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, I'm going to call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation of the fleet manager and purchasing agent to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for the purchase of three Toughbook computer systems with Tel Repco in the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred twelve dollars and fifty cents. This is further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated October thirtieth, and the Board of Public Safety has already approved this. Do you have a motion?
Sum up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And floor is open for questions. I hear no questions. I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten, I'll entertain a motion on the recommendation of the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board and the Fleet Manager to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute, and administer a contract for the purchase of one Silverado short crew cab four by four. This will be coming from Sullivan Northwest Hills in the amount of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty-three cents, as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated October thirtieth. Again, this purchase has already been approved by the Board of Safety.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouwett, seconded by Councilman Iveyne. And the floor is open for questions. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven, I will entertain a motion to waive the city bid process and accept the sole source pricing from Neptune Uniforms and Equipment from Haverhill, Mass for the replacement of ten honor guard uniforms in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is, it says it's pending Board of Public Safety approval. Did we not get their approval on this one? Okay, this is pending their approval. The funding of the purchase is coming from the uniforms account.
Sum up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, and seconded by Councilman.
And my only question, Mayor, is, you know, is this the only company that does this, you know, waiving the bid process for this purchase?
Sole source, yes. Sole source, I guess for the honor guard uniforms, yes. Other questions? I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee and I T Director and approve the replacement of City Hall Network Attached Storage System. This is N A S. The contract is to be awarded to C D W dash G L L C from Vernon Hills, Illinois, in the total amount of twelve thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-four cents, with funding to be sourced from ARPA GL account zero 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 zero.
Sum up.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Actually, the next several motions you'll see are all, yes, and consistent with the strategic spending plan that the council approved prior as we're approaching the December thirty-first deadline to get these all under contract. This is where we are right now, bringing these contracts to you for approval. So the next item on the agenda is a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee and I T Director and approve the redesign and platform upgrade of the City of Torrington website. The contract is to be awarded to Civic Plus from Manhattan. Yeah, Kansas, for forty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars with funding to be sourced, excuse me, from ARPA? Do you have a motion?
Second.
I heard Councilman, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions? Yes.
Comment? I'm happy this being, the website's being redesigned. Was there a bid process that I missed that, or?
So the Civic Plus is the company that currently services our platform.
You know, there's so many companies that are looking to redesign their websites, and not that I know Jerry's here. I don't like our website in terms of its usability, and I've had comments from other people about, you know, not being able to find things. So using the, it's probably cheaper to use the same company. Is Jerry able to answer that question?
Yeah, Jerry, do you want to?
There wasn't a bid process, she said, right?
Using the existing.
No, we're using the existing vendor. Yes, indeed, it is more cost effective to use the same vendor. We have a lot of data that exists on our current website. All that data needs to be migrated over. It's a new platform. The interface is different, the layout's different, there's better functionality. It features sets for the different departments in the new platform, so that's why we're making the change. And we agree that we've got a lot of feedback about the current website and how ineffective it is.
Like good or bad feedback, or?
So.
You know, negative feedback.
No, negative. So I know I want to point to the City Clerk's Office because they were part of the vetting process and determining whether this was the preferred way to go with this. And I think if I, if I recall, just to get our agendas uploaded onto the current website, takes how many clicks? Twenty clicks. Yeah. Yeah.
We did.
It sort of went out to bid, but not.
More of a comparison than a bid.
An R F I?
I would like to follow up. Woman Rouwett's concerns, I think. So we're going with the same company that did the original design, which everyone is unhappy with. And I just always questioned those, this came about years ago relative to some of the heating systems within this very building. We went down that route, and I always, to your point, the whole point of going out to bid is, and having an open bid process is because, is to look for, you know, better quality product at a cheaper price, and it just seems like this, I mean, it's forty, you know, pushing fifty thousand dollars, but I mean, it's not a huge amount of money, but still, we're supposed to be going out to bid at ten thousand, correct?
That is, yes, that is correct, but this is an existing vendor that services our platform, and this is upgrading the platform. We're currently under contract with this vendor. And what we're asking him to do is upgrade the platform. And I would also add that I think that everybody agrees that the website is not terribly user-friendly. It is cumbersome, it is. But keep in mind, but keep in mind, this, this was developed ten years ago. This is ten years old. So.
People were happy with it ten years ago, but.
I don't, yeah.
I'll back down.
Yeah.
There's no way to change it now, but hey, I don't like this process where, you know, I'm not sure what the vetting was, but all of a sudden, we're having the person, we're having the, you know my argument, I'll stop.
I hear you.
No, I think it's, you know, we want to have a bid process, and I think they're giving reasons why they don't feel like they need to. The data was important, so when you say all the data is in that system, if you were to, and I believe me, I am not technical, so I won't even, you know, present the idea that I might know what I'm talking about, but just with all that data, if you were to go out to bid and transfer that data to another vendor, would the cost be quite a bit more?
It would be considerable to bring that data over, to get out of the existing system, begin into the new, and then have a way to present that data in a way that's accessible, you know, by the public. And we don't feel that the other websites, the other providers that we looked at, really had a good platform to present the data the way that we've got it structured right now.
When this was written ten years ago, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Have we been paying Manhattan K S to upgrade? Have we, over that tenure, has there been upgrades throughout that tenure cycle?
No, there's an existing platform. It's a Drupal. I think it's, I think it's version six, whatever that platform was. They've created a new platform. Functionality is completely different, so this is a migration from the old platform to the new, which brings the advantage of all the new functionality. Just even, you know, all the modules and how you navigate going from the sites and user controls, all that is completely different.
Yeah, so ten years ago, when we were working on this platform, for the most part, people were still going to their laptops. They were not quite so reliant on these mobile devices. And our website does not translate well to the mobile device. That coupled with the vast amount of data that has been uploaded. So during the pandemic, when we, everybody was really forced to go to the website to get those updates and alerts and all of that, is when it really came to light that the platform, you know, the company was certainly doing what they needed to do to provide the services that we required, but the platform was just not keeping up with the times. And as you heard Carol and Heather suggest, you know, they did go through, you know, sit through some other companies that did a presentation and felt that their, what they were proposing wasn't going to be an improvement over what we have. It certainly wasn't going, from their perspective, on uploading information. And then, of course, you know, the maintenance of, you know, downloading stuff that was, that just doesn't need to be on the website anymore. You go in those, you know, the, you know, the depths of the bowels of the, of the website, I think you'll find some really old pandemic alerts.
All right.
Yeah, I was going to say, and that's part of it. So are you the administrator of the website, or?
No, I'm not.
Who, who is?
It's kind of a.
That's like everybody steps back and left them up front, yeah.
Yeah, different department, yeah, different departments have the ability to manage their, their pages.
Oh.
Department pages, so it's, there's not one entity.
Will that change? Will that change? Because I feel like, to your point, there's a lot of old stuff on our website that, you know, related to meetings from twenty seventeen or even earlier than that, but it's, is that efficient to have each department be the administrator of their respective pages?
I think it is if they know their content.
Yeah.
And what they're publishing.
So, and some of those pages that I find to be most populated and maybe it's a, it's a case of, I don't really want to take this information down, like our economic development page. That page, they hold on to everything for a very long period of time. Our land use, you know, the plan of conservation and development that was adapted fourteen years ago, you know, with a couple of updates. So, yeah, it, those, that's information only the department head knows what it's viewing public needs. But having an administrator of the administrators that's always in there looking to say, do you still need this? You know, on the front of your page, is this something that could be moved into an archive? Still available to the public, but not the first thing you see when you land on that page. A lot of work is going to have to be done.
I mean, just being administrator of a website. And I, I'm going to like, hate to be digging deep into this, but each department then has to have one person, City Clerk's Office has to have one person in each of those departments. Is this going to have a financial impact on next year's budget where you have someone with that capacity to be the administrator of that respective page?
I understand that that is the structure right now, so I don't think it's going to be an additional cost.
Somebody within each of that department. So if I see something old in a public works, sorry, Ray, right there. You know, we could go to that department to, not to you, but to that department to say, take this stuff down.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I said, I said City Clerk. Yeah. Oh. Or other department. Or other departments.
Well, there's your problem.
And I think the reason those other departments were going to Heather is because she is very tech savvy and she does know all of those departments. She's in the webpage all the time. But, you know, you get a little turnover in a department, you know, we went in the land use from Marty Connor to Jeremy, and then Nate, Nate came in. So all of those maintenance issues, you know, you know, were those professional development opportunities really done very well to do that transition. Or in economic development, we went from Aaron Wilson to Rista Malanka, and now we have William Wallach, was a very different idea of what his page should look like. So, yeah, by default, I think a lot of the people were going to Heather because it is so cumbersome to get anything uploaded, that they needed advice. And sometimes advice is easier for me to do it for you than to explain how to do it.
And I would add that I've had to make some changes for, you know, they've helped out other departments. And the existing website is very difficult to get your content up there. It's easy to, you know, just to add little content to the face of the page, but if you're trying to put, you know, documents up there, you know, change menus or do any of that, it's, it's a real bear. So we're looking forward to the new platform to make that easier so that.
So nobody, so they don't have to go to Heather.
Exactly. So in every department, everybody should be able to navigate the pages. You know, we want something that's, you know, what you see is what you get. It's more, it's easy to edit, make changes and see them.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I tried to manage a website one time, not me personally, but the agency I worked with. And it is not easy to do, no matter what the website is and how upgraded it is. So it seems like one person from each of those departments should have within their job description that responsibility. And if they're hiring somebody new for that position, they should know how to do that. So it would take the, I'm trying to help you over there, Heather, but anyway, I, I won't belabor this. Definitely needs, but I have.
No, they're all good questions. They were great questions. I agree. And again, you know, these are, in our strategic spending plan for ARPA, this was embedded in this, knowing that we needed to get to this point, getting this under contract in the next five weeks is the priority also.
Okay.
Last question.
Yes, please.
Okay, so now I'll take some of the blame.
At the end of the day, forty eight thousand dollars and change, is, is that the amount that was given to you to use this? Or is that based on, this is what they said it will take to get a significantly upgraded site?
That, that number comprised of two pieces. One is the actual migration of the old data from the old site and development of the new.
Yeah.
Plus the, and first year's maintenance costs. So it's actually two pieces.
But the redesign, this is talking about a redesign, right?
Correct.
Different platform.
I'm sorry.
A different platform, yes. And redesign will include, I know that Richard Lopez from our economic development office is already working on how to update some of the photographs and the graphics. And so there's already wheels spinning as to how it can be made better.
But my comment was, it doesn't seem like a whole lot, doesn't seem like that much money at this point in time to be literally redesigning and upgrade, you know, redesigning, moving over, and then maintaining a municipal website. And I just was wondering if, is that funding sufficient and how we got to that particular forty eight thousand? Are we going to see, at the end, for forty eight thousand five hundred ninety seven dollars and zero cents, are we going to see a significantly improved, user-friendly website that will work, that will, will work for all parties involved, optimally, all departments involved?
Yes.
Because that seems like a whole lot to do for that much, that little money.
And that was one of the questions at the committee. Yeah, that's a great question also. That was one of the questions that we asked, is how long is it going to take for us to get this work done? This isn't something that is going to happen in a couple of weeks. This is going to take some time. But.
It is involved in this day and age to do this kind of work. Doesn't, it doesn't seem like.
Yeah. Well.
No, I just, what I don't want to hear, no, what I don't want to hear, what I don't want to hear is after this many years in government, people coming back and saying, well, you know, to do this right, we needed more money, et cetera. I don't want to hear that. I, I, you know, if, if that is the case, I want to know now. The city council, I believe, would like to know that now. Okay? I don't want to hear excuses why this isn't good enough because we didn't have enough money.
Yeah.
Because we only could find in, you know, in the cushions of the sofa at ARPA, only forty eight thousand. So that's the number we used, and here's the damn thing. This will get us to where we want to be, where you would like us to be at this point in this, in the municipal IT space.
Yes.
Okay, fine.
He's on record.
It sounded very confident too. If there are no other questions, I'm going to call the motion, all in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number fourteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation to the Parks and Recreation Commission, Recreation Director and Public Works Director, and authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute a professional services agreement with SLR of Cheshire for park design and engineering services.
Go move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Spino. And the floor is open for questions.
Can we have an explanation of what's being redesigned?
So. I'll start while they're walking up. Probably one of the most frustrating things that I find is when I'm looking for some master plan or feasibility study that is so outdated that it doesn't even reflect the current times, kind of like the website. And this was something that we identified, that there was no strategic plan for our parks. So, over to you.
Okay, so first of all, to answer your question, there are no specific designs projected right now. We do have some specific projects that we would need designed. Athletic field lighting retrofits, athletic field improvements. Looking at our parks for different opportunities to diversify the parks. Do we have the right amenities in a park in a given location? Which leads to the mayor's comment in regards, the first thing we're looking for is, we have twenty six parks, so looking at that master plan. Okay, what does the master plan look like? So, you know, what should we be doing or, you know, looking at the community a park serves? For example, Joe Rouette Park, now we've done some recent improvements. And one of the impetus is of kind of going this route and looking for what that master plan looks like is, we don't want to continue on the path where we're just kind of putting things in. You know, Joe Rouette, for example, we, we were building concerns from softball leagues. There wasn't enough parking. We converted the old tennis courts to parking. You know, we had the place cape. Joe Rouette needs new athletic field lighting, okay? So we're not landscape architects. Our engineering department aren't landscape architects. So most of your parks designers are landscape architects. You know, we acquired, we have the Machuga property. Now, we've, we've owned that property for some time and just have never developed what that plan should be for that property. Now, we've had conversations. Do we put in sports fields? We have Charlene Bass, hundred and four acres sitting up there. We're doing a timber harvest. You know, our thought was putting in some passive hiking trails, right? But that needs to be designed, right? Because, I mean, we're not the designers for that type of activity. And looking at our park network as a whole, in, you know, are we serving the entire community? You know, are, you know, do we lack amenities in, say, the Burrville area? We do have a small park up there. Machuga would be a good development for that area. But we don't have any real, you know, diversified park that has a bunch of opportunities for recreation. We have the Subaru Spring Greenway. You know, we've been working on the Subaru Spring Greenway, the Nagatuck Greenway. It's, it's trail design. Paul's working on the Red Mountain. As you know, we acquired the eleven acres off of Red Mountain, which is another potential piece that we're looking at as potentially a new park. So that was the impetus of this. As opposed to going out for, look, okay, we need to do a design of the athletic lights. So we do an RFP for that. And we do an RFP for light replacements at Toro or Fusage or, you know, any of the other parks. Or, you know, what do we need? You know, as you know, we recently put in pickleball. But the consensus is we need probably more pickleball courts because it's such a fast-growing sport, right? But where do we put them? I don't want to put more pickleball courts next to the courts we have. So how do we look at that? So that was, that's our first task is, is doing the master plan. The last master plan we had for the parks was in two thousand and four. So it's twenty years, over twenty years. And unfortunately, a lot of those, what was identified, didn't come to fruition. So this is what we're looking to do. And that's why we went out for the request for qualifications for park design and engineering services. So when Bobby does have a project, albeit lighting field retrofit, we have a designer we can go to. Hey, I need, you know, you know, the, the city council and the board of finance approved X number of dollars for a capital improvement project. All right, can you design this for me? And then we bid it.
I love the idea myself because I do think that everybody thinks it's schools that attract people to a particular community. I think it's parks. And I don't have any data to support that, but, you know, oftentimes, you know, and I love the fact that you're looking at different kinds of parks in different locations of our community. So I'm all supportive of this. And I did want to thank you. I have a picture that I took in front of the renovated park. And it looks great. Thank you. And it's just the, the parking is so much better for the ball fields. And, you know, there's been some very positive comments. So sometimes we don't give them enough. But I would hope that when you begin this process, that you would ask the community somehow, maybe on your new website page.
So as we went through that process of selecting a firm, one of the criteria was their community engagement.
Good, thank you.
You know, when we start these projects, so it's just not Public Works doing an infrastructure project. Yay, we want to do this. We want to, you know, part of that process is engaging the community. And part of the development of the master plan is engaging the community and, you know, having workshops and charades and, you know, reach out, surveys, you know, whatever thing we can do to reach out to the community. What would you like to see in your park? You know, so like we have Red Mountain. Okay. You know, we kind of reach out. What do you, what would you like to see in this eleven acre parcel? Me personally? The mayor know what I would personally like to see? I would like to see a veterans park. You know, which, which commemorates veterans and, and the particularly Torrington veterans. But that's, that's my passion, but that may not be what the community wants, right? So, but that aside, one of the key components is, you know, what is the community? If you recall the process we went through with the skate park, we had the community workshops. You know, we had all the boards set up in here and people were given, you know, what do you want to see in this skate park? The community designed that park. They identified what they wanted to see in that skate park. That would be the same process that we would, we would do.
And I would just add, so when we look at that master plan that goes back to two thousand and four, the things that weren't on everybody's radar, pickleball, I think it was even Inventor, Gaga pits. You know, that, you know, that, I'm hearing kids, mayor's committee and youth tell me all the time, yeah, we'd like to play Gaga ball.
Camp, but every single camp, we have five or six of them at every camp.
Yeah, yeah. The. Yeah, I know, really.
Like a dodgeball cage match.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Without the cage. Yes, without the cage.
But even the, the demands for soccer have changed because, Bobby, I know that you've been meeting with some of our Hispanic constituents.
Yeah, the most requests I get are soccer and sand volleyball courts now on. We have a pretty large indoor women's volleyball league, but they're looking for more summertime coed volleyball. So I'm trying to find the right spot to put a couple of courts in.
People definitely found our city during the pandemic and after. So they, they've arrived here looking for that outdoor recreation space. And so we, I think we have thirty five parks in our city, which is a great number. And other, you know, state parks.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Well, some I wouldn't call parks, but they're, they're green spaces.
And I don't mind saying, you know, I see Councilman Kevin Arrow has his hand up. When we were first talking about how to spend this ten million dollars of ARPA, I know that you had identified, wouldn't it be great if we had some great complex? You know, that made us a destination for some competition? Well, this is what we can look at.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the floor is yours.
Well, along those lines, and I don't want, I was just thinking, in terms of looking and getting ideas, have we looked, I don't want to get too off, but have we looked to outside of just locally and regionally and even nationally, have we looked at like European models of how they use parks in certain ways that, you know, combine? I don't want this written up, but for instance, like, you know, in Germany, like a German, like a beer garden with a recreational facility where, you know, it's, it becomes, it just becomes something where the adults are, are there for one reason and the kids are there for another reason. And it is, you know, that's just, I mean, I've seen them over there and they just work so, they become, again, a centralizing area to draw people together, you know?
I think breweries and disc golf seem to be a pretty good marriage. Yeah.
But they do, again, it's, it's not just a, you know, booyah sort of place. It is, you know, as people who know this, you know, the German beer gardens, they're, they have sophisticated, you know, menus and, and, you know, offerings. And, and it is, it is a, it is a family orient, they can be very much family oriented. That's just, I just threw that out because that's like an immediate thing to copy. But there, there's so many other samples of that.
Sure.
In other countries, just to broaden our horizon is my point, you know, broaden the horizon.
Thank you, Paul. A quick question. How often should we revisit the master plan?
Well, I mean, you know, every five years, your, your plan should be reevaluated because, you know, one, the demographics in your community may have changed. Resources may have changed. So, you know, the ideal is to take a look at it, revise it if need be every five years.
I think our plan of conservation and development is a ten year. You're, you're, it's a mandate that you must update it every ten years.
Updated every ten years.
So, yeah.
But being that parks are dynamic, you know, potentially, I mean, who'd have thought pickleball was going to be such a craze? Has anybody watched on ESPN, the international cornhole tournaments, right? I mean, who would have, who would have thought there'd be an international leagues for cornhole?
All sports that you can partake in while holding a beer.
Exactly. And, and that's the impetus of the master plan. So that, you know, you're, you're creating venues that are all inclusive and well diversified. Well, we have a very diverse community. And that's what we're. Um, and that's what we're aiming to do. It's not just, okay, let's just build another baseball field.
Right, yeah.
We have enough baseball.
Yeah.
You know, and one of the things when, uh, we did the official opening of the skate park. One of the comments that came back to us. Uh, was a woman who said, I am so happy to see my tax dollars. Go into something the kids can enjoy. So, um, to everybody's point, you know, it, it comes from the ground up. You know, what is, you know, what are the families looking for? What are the adults looking for? You know, that pickleball court, it's not kids out there playing that.
No.
It's people my age, you know.
Say the baby boomers have, you know.
Certainly, yeah.
Traded the parks, I think.
So, um, I think there's.
You are.
I am a baby boomer, that's why I feel like I could say something about that.
So, um, I think that, you know, this is that one opportunity, and again, when I think about early, 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 when we. Knew we had this money, this was something we recognized was an investment worth making, so.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Walton?
One of the thoughts, as we. Look through our city, developing bike paths, walking trails, things like that. That also be inclusive in the planning. Uh, they are connecting parks and walkways for recreation, so hopefully.
Yeah, and, and that was kind of, you know, part of the overall look is a. You know, can we connect the parks? With trails? So that, you know. It's not, okay, I get, I want to go to this park so I can get in my car or. But, you know, can we connect the parks, you know? Machuga of, i- is. A prime example of the Subroth Greenway connecting that. To the Red Mountain Trail, you know, if we get all those pieces together, which. Paul is working diligently on to get more and more pieces of this design. How do we connect them all?
Great, I appreciate the, the master plan, thank you.
Mr. Walton, you had a point.
Uh, yeah, I have one question. Have, have you been to, uh, Veterans Park in Watertown?
Not in Watertown.
You should check that out, that's what I'd like to see developed in this town. It's a fantastic facility. They've got all kinds of fields, soccer, baseball, softball, they got. Bocce courts, they got picnic areas, you know, public bathrooms there, it's, it's a.
Yeah.
Quite a town resource for them. Uh, we always had the cross-country championships for the Nagatuck Valley League there every year. But you might take a look at that. I don't know if we have a tract of land big enough to compare with that, but.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what's, I haven't been there, so I don't know what size it is, but like I said, I mean, I'm not sure what Machuga is, Machuga is, I think somewhere in the thirty.
Forty, yeah, forty, almost forty acres.
Forty acres, uh, Red Mountain piece, which is eleven acres, um.
It's a lot of mosquitoes, yeah.
Mayor, I don't want to take a time, have you discussed this with? Um, with the team, the conversation we had about a year, at the beginning of the ARPA discussion about not just field, but. Specifically fields that would also support tournaments. Uh, which bring in tons and tons of revenue to a city.
Absolutely.
And there's a number of them, you know, girls. Field hacking things, so it's not just putting in a random number, that's another consideration, if you build it that we can then.
Right.
You know, you're, you're speaking his language, that's what I want, yeah.
Yeah. And I think that parking is, is a critical.
Multi-use tournament complex.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the parking is a critical part of that. Um, I know from my own experience, traveling to see my grandson play lacrosse. Thousands of cars for these tournaments.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, because it's each parent, grandparents, exactly, yeah.
They bring, brings in a lot of money. And I know there's a shortage in, in certain sports, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Good conversation.
Getting a demographic now is, you know, us baby boomers age out. That. People that want that, that really good life-work balance, right? So they want their community to have those recreational amenities, you know, where can you go, wait, I want to play pickleball, where do I go? Well, we can go here or here, or. I want to play pickup game of lacrosse, I don't know if lacrosse have pickup games, I don't know, but.
Everything does.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's proven, I mean, if you have a robust. Recreational program. You, you have a healthier community.
Yes, I, I think this is a great idea.
Alright, no questions, no further questions, I'm going to call this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, Ray, if you want to. I think the next question might invite some questions. Uh, item. Number fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the deputy public works director. City engineer and authorized mayor to utilize the CR cog. CRPC cooperative purchasing contract previously approved by the Torrington City Council. Um, to accept the proposal from Millennium Builders Inc. of Torrington. For the amount of six hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, and allow for expenditures of up to thirty thousand dollars for contingencies. This project work includes the replacement of the entire existing concrete railroad platform. The construction of a new two-hundred-foot timber frame canopy. New lighting and associated miscellaneous work. The project is funded by the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, um, as further explained in the city engineer's memo. Dated November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver, seconded by Councilman, um, Kevin Arrow. So, um, questions?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Do you mind just, uh, giving to the community online, um, just a little bit of an overview as to why this is necessary?
So I'll give it a little bit of the history.
Yeah.
So, um. A year ago, maybe a little more than a year ago. Uh, we recognized an opportunity. To start to stitch together some of the grants. Um, awards that had been given to the city with Hotchkiss Square. With, uh, roadwork happening on Midgeon Avenue. With the trail work that we were just talking about, how to connect the Susan Grossman-Grossman Greenway. To the center of Torrington and then ultimately to the Nagatuck River Greenway. And we recognized, um, uh, that the former railroad. Train station. Um, was really kind of in the middle of all of this. Um, Nagatuck Railroad has been sending a train up to Torrington, this is, you know, more of an entertainment. Uh, tourist kind of, um, trip that they make. Several times a year, um, I think it's every week or a couple of times a week in the summertime. Uh, and so when we pursued a grant under the community challenge. To do the work that would in- include that trail work. Uh, site work for placing Skis Diner near Christmas Village, parking lot behind Christmas Village. Uh, road improvements, sidewalk improvements on both Church Street and Water Street. Um, connecting John Street, uh, as part of the trail network. Um, and we got that, we got that grant. Recognizing, as I said, this sort of was, you know, that, um, that linchpin that. Sort of centered everything. Um, unfortunately. The DECD in January of twenty twenty-four notified us that they were defunding a portion of that. Uh, they left us with seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand out of the five point eight that they originally offered, five point four. Five point four they originally offered. Um, and that four point five million was part of the one ninety Water Street redevelopment of the former registered citizen building. Um, leaving a seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars gave us John Street. And a pedestrian. Pathway.
I didn't, yeah. Trail on church.
And a little piece of trail, but the pedestrian promenade went right to that broken. Yeah, that broken platform.
Right, yeah.
So, um, so that's the history. Um, when it became clear to us as we were working through all of our plans with ARPA, there was one project. Um, that was hinging on the state coming up with. Uh, bond funds for a radio antenna. It was clear to us in the last two months that that wasn't going to come to fruition, so we quickly pivoted. To something that we knew we could do quickly, and this is to, um, Mr. Cousins. Um, credit. Um, he had been working with SLR. On the design of this, hoping that this would be phase two of that pedestrian promenade. Um, we knew that we could probably pull this together pretty quickly, get it under contract, get it before this board for discussion and approval. Um, get it under contract and hopefully get it under construction in the spring, summer. That's the history. Questions? None. Alright. I'm going to, I, you know, I neglected to add in all of that, the partnerships that all came together as part of this. It's the Nagatuck Railroad. It's Franklin Products because, oh yeah, this is their property. And the YMCA. So, um, so it's really this, this, you know, four partners come together to make this happen.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions? I'll call it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the purchasing agent and deputy public works director, city engineer to lease a new multifunction printer. Provided by Automated Business Solutions for a hundred and sixty dollars a month. Uh, this will be a sixty-month lease. Uh, that includes, or excuse me, that, um. Uh, it doesn't include, but the, uh, per copy costs would be, um, above this hundred and sixty a month. For an estimated five-year cost of fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Funding for this will be coming out of the engineering department office supplies account as further explained in city engineer's memo dated November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Councilwoman Roulette, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne, questions?
Are we going to be able to print out really cool maps?
Absolutely.
Oh.
But I'll charge you.
Yeah, Paul shows up with, uh, nice, nice maps to, to the meeting, so, very nice.
Alright, if there are no other questions? I'll call it all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item seventeen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager to utilize a CT state DAS bid list. And approve the installation of a replacement furnace for the senior center activity rooms. And offices by Air Temp Mechanical, any amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, this will be paid from the ARPA funds as further described in the facilities manager memo dated November fifth.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Rouette, are there questions? I'm going to make sure there's heat for our.
Yeah, heat is good.
Yes.
Uh, can we just, uh, replace a system in there? Is it just air conditioning?
You qualify to be.
For summer.
We just replaced a rooftop unit, everything was installed within three years of almost everything, so everything is over thirty years old in the building. So we definitely got our full use out of every piece of equipment in there, and it's just not worth trying to repair the stuff anymore, it's so outdated. So that's what this is for, is replace, uh, furnace which failed two weeks after the rooftop unit did.
Yeah, what, what's the age of this piece of equipment?
Thirty-three years.
Oh, okay, so we, we ran it, of course.
Twenty years is a really good life expectancy, twenty-five is even better, thirty-three, we, we.
Okay.
It's been pushed.
And we, we gained a nice efficiency, uh, this change to.
Say that again?
We, there's a nice efficiency gain.
Yes.
By this replacement.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, this is, this will be a condensing furnace, so it's going to be somewhere in the nineties, right now, this is probably in the high eighties. So it should be definitely a lot better.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eighteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager to utilize CT DAS bid list to approve the installation. Uh, and replacement of boiler, condensate receiver. From the, uh, this is for the armory boilers, again, by Air Temp Mechanical, any amount of twelve thousand. Three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, this will be coming from the ARPA funds. Uh, as described in, um, facility manager's memo dated November fifth.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Spino, are there questions on this motion?
Nope.
Just, I do have a question.
Oh, no, me, no, no for me.
Just, you know, there was. Is it, this is a replacement of a part, correct?
Yes.
Versus a replacement of a whole boiler?
Correct.
How old is, how old is that boiler? A hundred years old?
No, not that, not, not, not that quite, I want to say the boiler's from nineteen sixty-five. The other one's a little newer, this is the tank that takes the water in to replenish the boiler, the inside is just rotting, everything is rotting out of it. So right now it's nursed enough to get heat, but. It needs to be fully replaced, and again, it's the kind of thing that it just sits there, there's no, it's been maintained, it just, it's old.
Yeah.
So steel rots over time in a steam system. We are looking into changing everything else out, but it's a much larger project and very much involved with heavy engineering. To replace everything in that building due to its age and what has to be put in.
I was just asked to ask that question.
Yeah.
Um, but it is nineteen sixty. I trust your, um, respective opinion, so if you replace this now. Are you looking to replace the other parts of the boiler in, at some point?
Yes, again, that's a much larger project, the power has to be upgraded for the whole entire building, has more stuff, it's electrified versus what's in there now. So, we can't wait to. Replace everything right now, it'd be a very, very long procedure to do that, so this is going to get us by for at least another. Two years, let's say, until we can come up with a better. Project program to replace everything as a whole.
Well, I'm absolutely going to approve it, but I do think from the age of that boiler at some point, it's nice to know you have a plan to do a larger project.
Yes.
Other questions? Comments? Concerns? I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Uh, moving on to item nineteen. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager. And police chief and approve the installation of a new chain link fence and gates for the impound lot. By Total Fence LLC of New Haven for an estimated cost of twenty-two thousand four hundred. Uh, this again is going to be paid from the ARPA funds as further explained in our facilities manager's memo.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino, seconded by Councilwoman Iveyne, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second phase of the Torrington Armory LED lighting upgrade. This consists of lighting material from electrical wholesalers. And the installation of new lights by a city contracted electrician, First Line Services. The estimated cost of lighting materials is nine thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars, installation cost is six thousand two hundred. Funding up to sixteen thousand will be from ARPA. Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilman, Councilman Kevin Arrow. Uh, questions?
I have just one.
Yes.
This is phase two, is there going to be a phase three?
No, this will complete all of it, then the building will be all LED.
Okay.
The first phase was just a gymnasium.
Great.
Other questions, comments?
Uh, again, uh, these types of upgrades, we realize a, a nice efficiency. On, on that change up, are correct?
Yeah, the new lights will be probably half the wattage of the existing lights, and then again, anything that is done, this is kind of through an instant rebate through ever source. So all the lighting material has to have a five-year manufacturer's warranty, so we shouldn't pay for any material for five years.
Wonderful, thank you again.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'll entertain a motion, number twenty-one, to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager and approve the installation of nine new speakers at City Hall Auditorium. By Soundworks Security of Torrington for the estimated cost of nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And eighty cents to be paid from ARPA as further explained in the facility manager's memo dated November fifth.
So moved.
Second.
Oliver, seconded by Councilman Kevin Arrow, are there questions?
So. Is this just for this room, for this space, um, so we have a, a terrible. Speaker system that you have in front of City Hall in the building there.
Yeah.
Can you add a few more dollars to replace that, I mean, it's. When you do the Christmas tree lighting, it's probably, I mean, it's terrible.
Yeah.
Flag raising, flag raising, you know, any kind of.
That's been replaced, we have one, the other one's on back order to upgrade that entire speaker system. That's the portable speaker system.
Right.
Yeah, this is for this room only.
Right.
Yeah.
I understood that, I was just, so it is going to be replaced?
Correct.
Before Christmas?
I'm, I'm hoping, we'll get one definitely, one, like I said, one is in stock, the secondary speaker is not, the manufacturer only had one, it's on back order, so we're. Hoping to get it expedited as fast as possible, but yes, it'll. get it expedited as fast as possible. But yes, it'll be a lot better than the antiquated one we had.
The mayor has a projected voice, but not, not so, not so much when you have a street full of people. But thank you.
We started that process when it failed at the other flag raising, so.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 22. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager and approve the installation of a second AV system camera and upgrade the AV software in the auditorium by Soundworks Security of Torrington for an estimated cost of $5,463 to be paid from ARPA funds as explained in the facilities manager's memo.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilman Cavanero.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions on this one?
What will this system allow us to do? What's the, is it a different view or?
So right now, everybody's seeing the back of my head. I don't know what it looks like, but I'm sure it'd be better if you could see the person's face up here speaking. And unfortunately, the AV software that went in here was so new that the software only allowed one camera feed. There is no way to put in a second camera. And if you did, it would be a very, very expensive, like another $8,000 on top of this for additional equipment. They now released, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, the upgraded software package that allow multiple cameras. So this would be putting a camera in up here that would face this way. So if somebody's up here talking, you could see this view as well as still seeing the view of everybody up there.
Okay. So we're really voting to see him or not see his back?
That's exactly, the back of his head or the front, yeah. And the only thing I would add is, in the land use meetings, planning and zoning, this is really important because so many people are making presentations on their projects and developments, that it's really patently unfair that the public, viewing public can't see it.
Yeah. I agree.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none. I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 23. I will entertain a motion to approve the reimbursement, and actually, yeah, to approve the, excuse me, payment of $16,835 to SLR International Corporation using contingency funds from fiscal year 2425 budget. This is pending Board of Finance approval as further explained in Economic Development Director's memo dated November 18, 2024.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. Seconded by Councilman Iveyne. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 24. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Commission to approve the purchase of toy gifts for the 2024 season for Carl Przynski's Christmas Village. These are being provided by Darrell Green. The price is $21,962.40 as further explained in the Recreation Director's memo dated November 8, 2024. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 25, and good timing on our budget manager. I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget transfer request for FY 2425 as further described in the manager of budgets letter dated November 6 pending Board of Finance approval.
I'm moved. Second.
Councilwoman Rowett, Councilwoman Spino. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 26. I'll entertain a motion to release the liens listed in Corporation Council's memo dated November 18, 2024. Thank you, Councilman Iveyne.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 27. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in the list.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walden. Seconded by Councilman Oliver. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 28. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer use refunds indicated in the list.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Oliver. Yes. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 29. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
I'm moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Walden. Seconded by Councilwoman Spino. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have a room full of department heads. Anything from the public works? Park and Rec? Anything? Bobby? Facilities management? And engineering? Thank you. And Emile, anything from fleet management? Okay, thanks. Erica, anything you want to add regarding budget or budget management or finance? We have a new accounts manual. And audit. And FY 24 audit, actually, we're like inches away from being done with that. And it's a really good feeling to have something done this early in the game. Carol, anything from city clerk? Okay, anything from Corporation Council?
Nothing there, thank you.
All right, then I'm going to move into item number 30, excuse me. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Second.
And Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll start from my left. Anything this evening, Councilman Oliver?
Uh, not tonight. Thank you, mayor.
Okay, Councilman Cavanero.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Rowett.
Nothing, mayor. I talked enough.
Okay. Councilwoman Spino?
Nothing tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Iveyne? And Councilman Walden?
May everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.
Oh, yes, as well.
Thank you. It is fast. All right. And the only other thing that I would add, because it does say mayor and members, is just a reminder that tomorrow is the state's mandatory recount for the 8th senatorial district, because the margin of the vote was so, it fell below that one half of 1%. So here in the auditorium, you'll see a lot of poll workers, once again, pulling those ballots out and counting them. Item 31. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting back up to the public for agenda items only, please. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino.
Thank you.
And Councilman Iveyne. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And from the public on agenda items only, any comment? Seeing and hearing none, there being no further business before the board. You guys did some really good work here tonight. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Spino. And I heard, I'm gonna say Oliver down here.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Well done, all.
But still, man, it goes through 32 items. It's a lot of money we spend.